That's why. Remember you had the ringtone scares last time?
We're on?
Uh, yes.
We're on, okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the New Market Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, January 29th. It is now seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. And our first agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is public comments. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak to a non-agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close with the public comments. A review and approval of the minutes from December 11th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Who are, who are voting members?
Oh, thank you. Bill? Okay, so we, I, um, so, so someone in for Eric. And Bill, you brought it up, so you will vote on anything we are going to vote on, which tonight is a journey.
Not much. I'll make a motion.
Um, there was a second on the minutes. Any discussion? Any corrections? Edits? Okay, I just have a couple. Oh, I don't have the doing items. I'll get these to Diane because they're not substantial.
Well.
They're just edits. Two-year. They're, um, more grammatical and on the motions.
Okay, you want to take these and I'll take those?
Yep, we can do that. You could have both of them. So it was just clarification of the motions, um, which probably have been clarified in the one I didn't print out.
So that's the edited, unedited version.
Correct. Okay, seeing no other comments, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Our next agenda item is a merger of lot lines. A town of New Market owned lands on Young's Lane, tax map U3 lots 48 and 49. And Diane, I would ask you to just give us an overview.
Yeah, um, the town is entering into a lease agreement with AT&amp;T to locate a cell tower in back of the fire station. And it will have benefits, not only expanding cell service in town, but also, um, emergency dispatch enhancements as well. And apparently there was some initiative and, um, ETA, AT&amp;T submitted a proposal and got this contract to expand cell service in New Hampshire. So this is part of that initiative. New Market has been selected as a location for this enhanced service. So they're coming in, um, probably in March, at the March meeting, or possibly the February meeting, um, with an application citing of cell towers, telecommunications towers is considered under our minor site plan review requirements, and there's a section in the ordinance. And I have met with them and their representatives. We have a letter from Steve Forni authorizing that the town, you know, submit the application on their behalf. And, um, so will be coming forward shortly. And, um, strikes me that they have a good proposal. They looked at several sites here in New Market and we, um, you know, talked about areas where they were so-called dead zones and so forth, and areas that may not be suitable because they're close to existing neighborhoods. And it was suggested sort of the 11th hour, well, let's look at the Public Works on Fire Facility site because that's sort of out of the way. I mean, you can see it from the river, but you really can't see it from a distance. And there are, they actually did a balloon test and, um, identified different locations in town and did an assessment of whether or not you'd be able to see the tower from those locations. There was maybe one or two residents up near the manufactured, uh, sleepy hollow, manufactured home, uh, housing cooperative park, um, where there might be, you know, some of this, you know, where people can actually see it. But it sounded like it was a good location. They did their, uh, radio frequency tests that they do, and it met the criteria, so they're moving forward with the application. So that, that'll be a plus that I, I'm sure the town will oversee some revenue. I'm not sure what the details of the lease agreement are, but.
Diane, I would, um, ask, and I don't know if it's appropriate, so I'll defer to you and, um, the rest of the group. As a telecommunications professional.
Oh, okay.
Um, I would be happy to assist looking over the contract if it hasn't already been signed.
Okay, I, it, the contract and the lease agreement is being negotiated between the town administrator, the company, and I know John Raddigan's office has been involved, but I can offer that up as to them.
I would, I would welcome the opportunity.
Okay.
One of the key things regarding, um, cell towers is AT&amp;T or any provider. I'll say the ABC company will come in and, and say to a town, here's your tower. And everyone's excited about it because it offers coverage and enhances the experience and everything else. But they also forget that other carriers then jump on top of that tower and the revenue that the town is getting is only based on the first companies and not the additional companies.
Right.
So that's, um, a couple of things to think about. And another thing to possibly consider is, um, as the community develops, um, will they make sure they map to that development? And/or if the community around that area changes dramatically where appearance becomes an issue, that they have to, um, help with the appearance that helps add value to the community. So most contracts don't include those types of elements. And if they would like, I'd be more than happy to assist.
I'll mention that to the town administrator and the town legal counsel who's working on the lease agreement.
I mean, the Ts and Cs is legal, but, um, the financial elements can be reviewed.
Right, who really gets the money? Whoever is putting up the tower.
Exactly, the finance of concern with the town.
Bill?
So, again, I probably don't have jurisdiction to ask the question, but why does the town want to merge two lots?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't give you clarification.
Which is really what, what's before us.
When the town acquired the lot, they acquired three lots in back there, and two of them were side by side. And in the plan, the site plan that they've provided us, actually, there's going to be a lease area of so many square feet. I forgot the number off the top of my head. I think it's 400 square feet, 200 by 200, whatever.
An area.
Whatever, it's an area. But it turns out that this boundary between the two lots bisects their lease area in half.
And that's a problem why?
Um, well, typically, from a logistical standpoint, if you're going to have a lease agreement, you want to make sure it's on the same piece of property. So there's, if, if it was, if I was the leaseholder, I would want that.
Yeah.
So it's just a logistical thing.
Yeah, I mean, if the town wants to merge them, they can merge them.
Right, and I, just a point to be made, anyone can merge any lots, you know? The, the semantics here is just having planning board approval to record the merger and then to put the owners on notice that now those lots have been merged. If they are looking to subdivide in the future, they have to go through the planning process.
Right.
Maybe not the town, but.
They're not tested per se.
But, you know.
That's good.
Okay.
So anyway, it's a perfunctory type thing where we draw up the paperwork. There's a standard format we use. And we ask the planning board to authorize the chairman to sign that, chair, to sign that merger so it can be reported at the registered deeds.
There's no mortgage.
There's no mortgage. That was a question that always ask, is there a mortgage problem?
So, any further questions or discussion on the merger? And what you're, what you, what I need a motion on is to authorize the, authorize a representative of the planning board, the chair, to sign the notice of merger. That's the motion I'm looking for. Right. It's an authorization to sign this. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Jane?
Jane and Gretchen.
Mm-hmm. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next I, next agenda item are, is the discussion of the master plan. So I believe everyone got the handout from Diane and Sue as to where we were at between 2001 and 2013. You know, we can get this updated further at some point. And I just really want to review mostly too for the people at home in the, or in the audience. So the, the, under the RSA, state regulations, under chapter 674, locally and used planning regulatory powers, the, the authority and the responsibility of the planning board is to adopt a master plan. And that is one of our duties. Under the planning and zoning, um, again, under chapter 674 of the master plan, the purpose and description is as follows. And again, I'm really reading this more for people at home because we serve you and this is why we are here. "The purpose of the master plan is to set down as clearly and practically as possible the best and most appropriate future development of the area under the jurisdiction of the planning board, to aid the board in designing ordinances that result in preserving and enhancing the unique quality of life and culture of New Hampshire, and to guide the board in the performance of its other duties in a manner that achieves the principle of smart growth, sound planning, and wise resource protection. Secondly, the master plan shall be a set of statements and land use and development principles for the municipality with such accompanying maps, diagrams, charts, and descriptions as to give legal standing to the implementation ordinances and other measures of the planning board. Each section of the master plan shall be consistent with the others in its implementation of the vision section. The master plan shall be a public record subject to the provisions of RSA 91-a. And the master plan shall include at a minimum the following two required sections." So these are mandated by statute that the master plan includes the following. "The first is a vision state section that serves to direct the other sections of the plan. This section shall contain a set of statements which articulate the desires of the citizens affected by the master plan, not only for their locality, but also for the region and the whole state. It shall contain a set of guiding principles and priorities to implement that vision. And the second is a land use section upon which all the following sections shall be based. This section shall translate the vision statements into physical terms. Based on a study of population, economic activity, and natural, historic, and cultural resources, it shall show existing conditions in the proposed location, extent, and intensity of future land use." So the master plan as an option in what was referred to as the following sections for land use, those land use sections include a transportation section, a community facility section, an economic development section, a natural resource section, a natural hazard section, a, um, a recreation section, a utility and public service section, a section which identifies cultural, archaeological, and historic resources and protects them for rehabilitation or preservation from the impact of other land use tools, such as regulations, housing, and transportation, a regional concern section, a neighborhood plan section, a community design section, a housing section, an implementation section, an energy section, or a coastal management section. So all of those items, um, A through O are whether or not the municipality, you know, would want to adopt those sections. Or in our case, we are considered, we consider them chapters. But they all do fall under the land use section which is mandated and all must meet the, the general overview of the vision.
They're separate chapters from the land use section.
Right, well, they're.
They're part of the land.
Correct. So the, the, the statute refers to them as sections and that we call them, you know, but they're based upon land use under the RSA. We refer to them as chapters. So if, so if we're talking about different chapters of the master plan or updating chapters under the RSA, they're referred to as sections. If anyone wants to go online, you can go to chapter 674 and see a description of any of those particular sections of a master plan. So that said, the master plan, sections or chapters really should be kept current. You know, and they talk about a 10-year update of the master plan. Some communities will hire a consultant at a lot of money. We've been, we've been accruing money for this. Under the statute, we're allowed to, as a planning board, to request money to update the master plan. The town voters have been voting in funds. The council has been appropriating them as such to actually do a major rewrite of the master plan or updating of the master plan. But in the meantime, in between that, we, as a board, have elected to pick particular chapters and update them. And so what you have before you as of 2013 was the last updates. But in that time period, we have also done the future land use. Um, demographics was part of that, current land use. So we have been trying to, as funds have been available, or it's a lot of work, so as Diane's time has also been available, and, um, and working in conjunction with, um, Stratford Regional Planning with grants, we've been able to, as a community, been able to consistently, not once a year, but at least pretty much every other year on average, being able to update chapters in our plan. And so now we're at a point in time too, as we continue forward as a board, we should be starting to think about what, what chapters are important for us as a board to have in our master plan relative to the vision statement, which was also updated within the past 10 years. And think about where to put our resources of time and money and where to prioritize, um, updating those particular chapters or adding in new chapters or sections as, as referred to in the RSA. So that was really the basis of the request when I asked Diane to kind of give us, you know, what the, um, the current or last updates were and what's currently in the chapter, you know, of our master plan. All members should have the master plan. And I know that it's not all one document because the chapters in recent years have been pretty lengthy, so we're publishing them as separate, you know, entities, if you will. So I think, and, and so I think it's important that in next, and then in March, obviously, we, um, we'll be having potentially new people sit on the board to figure out in a workshop session possibly, you know, where to focus and, you know, if, if, if we want different chapters in the plan or which chapters we want to be updating. So, you know, that's what's important for the board to be thinking about. We've talked about this in a couple meetings, so at this point, I just want to open the floor to the board members to see if they have any comments or thoughts about this project. Any members? Bill?
I have a question. So I've got data here to tell me where we're at as of 2013.
Right, we need that updated.
Can we get where we're at as of 2018?
As in doing a complete update?
No, no, Diane.
No, no, I don't know what's been touched.
I think it's updated as of.
No, 2013.
I'm sorry.
I know, 15. So we do have the future land use, Bill, if you come down.
That's a mistake.
And I see where it says proposed for updating.
And we did update that.
This, I updated this as of the way it stands right now.
Yeah.
Although, and I want to talk for a minute by saying although we haven't worked on drafting new chapters in the master plan, we've been working on implementing the recommendations that came out of the master plan, which included the, um, assisted living overlay district that we did last year and some of the zoning changes. I just want to make sure there's a distinction between drafting the master plan and implementing it because we are working to, you know, come up with some other zoning changes as well.
So, did I understand then?
To answer your question?
This is current?
This list is current based on today.
And your list is the same as my list?
No, mine's, mine's the old one.
See, this is 2013. That's what I'm saying. That, at the beginning of my commentary was we'd be getting, I would be getting this updated.
All right.
Okay.
When I give that back and it requires the dates for difference. I don't understand why you got the old one. That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that's what was attached.
I wonder if I sent out.
But this is what was attached to everybody, everyone's document. That's okay. So. So as we look at this, um.
That's goodness.
Yeah.
Because I thought we.
So the vision statement, as I, as I referred to.
I spent a lot of time updating it, so I know it was updated.
So, as, for the vision statement, that was updated in 2015. And also in 2015, we did the update to the pop, because we did it kind of together. The update of the population chapter, the housing chapter, um, in future land use came after that. So we were kind of doing that, you know, together, if you will. So there are several chapters that are just way out of date. These ones that the last updates were 2001. So you have to ask yourself, well, if the vision statement was from '05, do the ones in '01, are they chapters we still want to have? You know, do they become a priority to try to tackle one or two of these, you know, either maybe as a subcommittee? Again, it takes a lot of time and it especially takes a lot of Diane's time, so we have to be conscientious of this.
It's very, very labor intensive, requires not only doing a lot of data collection, mapping, um, data analysis, but also putting together the text and justification and putting out the production of the report with reps. And, and usually, you know, communities that have planning staffs, they have one or two people that, whose job it is to update the master plan as opposed to doing everything that we do, which is a long list of things in comparison.
Based on your job needs, Diane, where are we lacking that affects you the most?
Well, the town council had a meeting in, with the planning board in September, and they talked about initiative that they feel very strongly about that they want to move forward with. And, um, if you recall.
The gateways.
When we met with them in September, their interested was, interest was moving forward with, um, implementation of some of the economic development related recommendations that were in the master plan, the future master plan.
It was under future land use and economic development.
Right, which was updated in the winter of 2016. And so there was some recommendations that were sort of put on hold until we had the chance to, um, seek out support from the council on some of the recommendations that came out of those, um, studies. And so the, the town council has asked that we look at the three gateways going into New Market as potential business areas, looking at the area north of the downtown, um, along Route 108 as a potential business zone, looking at the south gateway, which is in the vicinity of the Rocky Hill Country Club, and the River Depot and the commercial development that's occurring in the industrial park area. Look at that area to see if there might be some potential for mixed-use development to expand that area. And the third, which we've talked about a lot in the past, is the, uh, business zone located off of Route 152 towards the, uh, towards the Lee Town Line, um, in the vicinity of the gravel pits, where you have several hundred acres of land that's, um, zoned for business. And it has received some development over the years, but not to the extent that was envisioned by the planning board back in 1998 when the zone was, I think it was 98, no, forgive me, 2003, when that zone was established. Um, there's been some development, but not a whole lot. And with the, uh, many of the pits coming to the end of the useful life, um, it made sense to look at that area as a potential zone. And that was one of the areas that the Economic Development Committee was recommending as a site for potential continuing care retirement community, if you recall from those discussions a couple of years ago. So what the council, um, has asked the town administrator to do is enter, well, he's, we've entered into a contract with an economic development firm, Stu Arnett, who used to be the state economic development director and has his own planning business these days. He's a certified planner. And he has put together a team of people to work with the, um, town to come up with, um, some strategies, if you will, and to take a second look at these, the concepts that were put forth by the Economic Development Committee, but also to focus on the three gateways to see what we can do in terms of coming up with a cohesive plan for that area. And of the three gateways, the northern gateway seems to have the most potential because of the extensive improvements that have been made there with the state, um, coming in and widening the road and putting in shoulders and light paths and sidewalks and so forth. And as part of the work that was done by the state, the town had to upgrade the infrastructure, water and sewer facilities in that area because of the lines were so integrated. And that really, now that we have those more, you know, modern facilities in place, we're in a much better position to attract development in that aspect, the younger town, because of the ability to tie into water and sewer and to use the capacity that's now available under these new projects that happen. So.
Okay, circling back, were there any comments from planning board members?
Well, he asked the question.
Asked to.
I'm conveying the message.
Did that answer your question, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. So circling back, as far as what our duties are as the planning board, if, if anyone's thought about this or had comments about it, do we think about tackling, you know, a, a chapter? Um, do we think about what chapters we really want in the master plan? And maybe more that's the discussion? And does it make sense to, to have basically like a, a planning board subcommittee that really can kind of delve into, you know, what it is we have, what these other optional chapters are, and making a recommendation to the board? So I think that really, to me, should be the discussion is how does the planning board want to move forward with what we're doing with our current chapters or other chapters that we may want to see? And, and again, also to start getting into a preparation, is it 2020 or 2021 where we think?
2025 is.
2025 is the date?
Identified as one we have accumulated, finds to do a real comprehensive overhaul.
And if you, and if you think about that, the 20, you know, 2025, that's, that's almost 10 years out from when we really did our last update. We're already, you know, that's the 10-year rewrite, but some of these chapters then are going to be, um, what, twa, yeah, 24, yeah, 24 years old. So I just want, so I didn't know if there's any more comments? You know, we have it as an agenda item. If people want to comment on my suggestions or just, you know, we continue to just, you know, think about this, bring it up at another, at a future, um, meeting. It, but really, it is our duty, so how do we really want to, um, kind of move forward with this?
So, how about, um, well, I shouldn't say how about, a couple quick questions. One, do we have to map this to anything with the county?
No.
No.
So whatever the county development plan is, it doesn't matter?
We don't have regional planning committees.
Right, so it doesn't matter.
We don't have county governments that have land uses on.
But for the region, like, like when Stratford comes in and talks to us about, you know, what they see and we don't.
Well, transportation be an example. So if we do, if we're, if we're updating a transportation chapter, it's going to be pretty much, you know, um, we'll be relying on, well, what's the whole regional plan for transportation?
That's my point.
You can't be an island in of itself, so is that more what you're thinking about?
Yeah, I think that's my point, yeah.
Yeah.
And the region does get money through federal highways to put together, um, a 10-year, um, transportation improvement plan. And, you know, participates in the fund, funding process to help get monies for the region to implement state traffic improvement, transportation improvement projects.
Right, so that, that was my point though, is we have to kind of map it. So maybe for, like, for transportation, maybe, but some of the other things, no?
We might say, well, I have a transportation, you know, chapter. Is that necessary for New Market? We haven't looked at it since 2001. And, and keep in mind too, you know, as, under the RSA, we're developing a master plan. Under the master plan, we are developing ordinances that meet the vision statement in the chapters that then the town council votes on. And out of the ordinances, the planning board is adopting, you know, subdivision and site plan regulations that are supposed to be consistent, right, with enacting the ordinances and not contrary the master plan. So that's kind of the hierarchy and why there's a master plan. It's the roadmap. So it's like where does New Market want its, want its map to be? What does it want it to look like?
And then the next, next question I have is like when Durham just did that, um, um, community development, does that affect anything that we might be thinking about? Because maybe it changes where students want to live, not want to live, and just using that strictly as an example.
There is a provision in the state law where the planning boards can, the pub surrounding communities can review projects that are considered to have regional impacts.
Okay.
And for instance, when the university in the town of Durham were doing some developments adjacent to the campus for student housing, um, it was fairly large development. And, um, it was an opportunity extended to us to comment and critique and be part of that regional impact development review process.
Okay.
So there is certain provisions. They don't have regulatory power, which is different than what some counties have in certain areas throughout the country.
Okay.
But they do participate in the regional. But they do participate in the regional transportation program that is funded and financed through the Department of Transportation and through federal highways.
Okay, good, thank you. Those are the only two I had, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board on this subject?
I think it makes sense, if you want to move to the next step, you got to figure out what that next step is in the committee. Seems a logical step in order to consider these, bring back, bring their considerations back, back to the board for review.
Okay, so let's put that on the March agenda.
Okay, I'd like to also say that in the past, that the projects have been driven primarily by what's available through the Regional Planning Commission for funding. And in the past, we were fortunate to get funding through NOAA, through the Hampshire Coastal Program. And we used that source of funding for the water resource update. We also used it for the, um, the future land use plan and the economic.
So, the committee could look at, with your assistance, where is funding likely to be or for grants or assistance to help in different chapters?
And I have had a discussion with Kyle Cimental, who was with the Regional Planning Commission. And he identified a couple of funding sources that are coming down through that we might be interested in. He worked with the town administration on a hazard mitigation plan recently, which is one of the requirements to get emergency assistance through FEMA for flood-related disasters and that sort of thing. And it was suggested that perhaps we could get some additional funding through that source to maybe do a disaster plan, if you will. And that's one of the options that's identified in the RSA's. It's called a natural hazards section under item C. And then the other is, they recently applied for some funding from the Department of Environmental Services for source water protection. And they have received some grant money and they'd like to know if Newmarket would like to be a pilot community and maybe receive some funding to update the water resource plan that has also changed in the past few years with all the initiatives that the Water and Sewer Department have been involved.
And that's, and that's 10 years since we've updated that one.
So, there, there is money available through those sources. I'm also finding that their ability to provide municipal planning services at this kind of level, local planning level, is not as great as it used to be in years past. And we're finding, you know, everybody's faced with budget constraints and so forth. So, in the future, the funding may not be as forthcoming, shall we say, as it has in the past.
Okay, so we'll put this on the March agenda, if no one's objecting, to formulate a subcommittee to kind of work on the whole, the process of the master plan, identification of chapters that we want to maintain in the master plan and other optional chapters or sections that currently aren't there that we might want to consider as a board.
Now, I'm just going to make one other, actually, suggestion or question for the board. I know that we had our, our meeting with the town council, our joint meeting already. And Diane's already recapped one possible chapter. But that was sort of informal and not real concrete. Do you want me to ask the council for which they think are aligned with their goals? What their picks would be? Just as feedback for the.
Yeah, well, I think what Diane was referring to is the, with where the council is going, with the economic development, that really does fall under the economic development plan. They, those were action items in that plan.
Yes.
So, I guess the question would be if that particular chapter is not consistent with where the town wants to go. So, if you think about rereading chapter six, you know, as the, as the appointee to the council and saying, boy, is what the council doing in line with this chapter? I think that's important.
I'm also thinking of the transportation one as well.
Perfect example too.
And maybe there's a third one, that's what I'm.
I think that would be good input to, for the board to have, for sure, absolutely.
One of the things we can, we are working with a consulting firm to put together a project to start with. And the gateway project is something that has sort of risen to the top of the list as being of importance. But we can ask them as part of their work to give us a summary of how that zoning proposal, whatever it is that they'll come up with, how that fits in with the master plan. And then ask them to evaluate possible revisions that need to be made. Maybe it's a matter of adding some paragraphs, adding some bullet items. But I mean, it doesn't have to be a laborious process. It could just be a short amendment, if you will, to that chapter. And that would certainly be more manageable than putting together a 200-page planning document with statistics and projections and all that demographics.
So, sorry, there's just some parts of, when you read the chapter that, well, this no longer applies and it never will apply because it doesn't exist anymore when you read through them. So, making those kind of edits is, is more of a simple task.
I think we're in a good position because we do at least have something on the books for future land use that's fairly known. And is sort of, would sort of dovetail with some of the work that's already been done by the Economic Development Committee. Could you, and Val, you can correct me, but didn't you look at all these different areas as part of the work that Peter?
The EDC did under the?
Yeah, as far as potential for business opportunities and the likelihood and what needs to be done to facilitate it. So, I mean, it really does dovetail with the work that's already been done in the future land use section.
Okay, any more comments on that topic? If not, I'm going to, I'm going to turn the next agenda item over to Diane to just give a brief update on where the committee is with the stormwater regulations and a timeframe for where the committee feels that they will be before the board with workshop or public comments, anything like that.
Since, I guess, November, maybe December, we had our first meeting. We had two meetings with the subcommittee. And I'd like to mention that Gretchen, Bill and Dan sat on that committee. And we appreciated the input that we received from the committee members. What we, we were able to accomplish in two meetings, we were able to update the new changes to the subdivision regulations. We also made revisions to the site review. For the new members way back and spent almost a year now, February of last year, the planning, the committee who had been working at that time with stormwater regulations came forward. We had a work session and there were a lot of questions that were raised as to how those regulations fit into our overall regulatory scheme and what the basis for them were. And of course, we're following a model that has been put together by the Southeast Watershed Alliance. And some of the communities in Rockingham County have already adopted new regulations in response to that. I think our friends over at the town of Exeter included in that. And actually, one of Dan's cohorts was very helpful in giving me some advice on some of the stormwater regulations on bonding requirements for stormwater. Remember, we talked about that a couple of months ago? And I spoke with Jennifer. And Dave, actually. And thank you for offering their assistance. But we had two very productive meetings and we have cleaned up the draft, so to speak. And we've made several changes. And I have provided copies of the drafts to you. We've also, at the request, I think it was you Gretchen, maybe? You liked the idea of the spreadsheet that showed the before and after so that we could follow. And it's, some of this stuff is kind of complex and arcane and it's difficult to really get a handle on it. But Kyle did agree to update that list for us. And so, we have a spreadsheet showing how the existing language compares with the new language. And we also had discussed at a committee level, there were some things in the model that we did not include, but we tailored it to meet Newmarket's needs. So, we have the two spreadsheets, one for the subdivision, one for the site review. We have the regulations, we have the comments that were raised at the last work session in February. And I have put together responses to those and I shared those responses with the subcommittee so that we would be sure that we were targeting and focusing our changes on the things that people had the questions about. So, I think at this point, and just a little bit of background, we saw this project, we put on hold for a while because we ran out of money. And the grant that we were hoping to, you know, provide resources to keep this process going was sort of, came to a screeching halt. And then we had to find more money and so forth. And then there was a change in staff and at the Regional Planning Commission. But anyway, we were able to get the project back on track. We are now ready to come forward with another draft. And so, what I'm going to suggest, and I put together the packet for everyone, and also some resource materials, I'd like to send this out for a peer review and to our so-called stakeholders. And I've talked to a couple of engineers with whom I work who have expressed an interest in reviewing what we have and commenting on it and telling us, you know, whether or not it's too restrictive, that it's not restrictive enough, or it's in line with what state requirements are. And Al, I don't know if you've made any progress in finding some development folks, developers, who might be able to do a similar review so that we can have a perspective from the developers' standpoint. And so, what I wanted to do is let's suggest that we start a 60-day. And if 60 days is enough, tell me. I thought it was a reasonable amount of time. I have a 60-day review period. Send out what we have in this packet out to the stakeholders, the developers, the engineers, the architects, landscape architects, conservation commission members, other folks that have an interest in this water quality folks, and get some feedback from them. Also, the folks at the UNH Stormwater Center, Jamie Hul, actually did attend to our work session last February, but unfortunately, he had to leave early, so we didn't really have the benefit of hearing from him. He was very, very instrumental in working with the Southeast Watershed Alliance and putting together the model ordinance. And he probably knows that ordinance and the MS4 program at this point better than anybody in the state of New Hampshire. So, he's offered to come and help us with, some of this stuff is very, very technical. And I'll be the first to admit it when we start talking about hydrology and performance curves and whether or not there's effectiveness and how you measure that and the modeling that goes behind. I mean, I'm, I'm lost. And Dan is an engineer, you might be able to, to comment on that. But some of this stuff is kind of, it's in this confusion. There's even confusion, you call EPA up and say, look, we're working on this stuff. How do we interpret this? And you might get five or six different interpretations from five or six different people depending upon their expertise, so.
So, 60-day review period?
60-day review period. And then come back and have our work session again with our, hopefully with the benefit of some peer review and comments and invite people to come and then hash through the regulations again. And hopefully, we can adopt them.
So, that brings us to April, which is a good time period from the, for either workshop or having, you know, as an agenda item or a business meeting. I think that also gives, you know, if anyone is newly elected to the board in March, then it would give that person 30 days to, or however many days to kind of get a little bit caught up to speed. So, we'll plan, and is there any discussion or preference that we would do this in a workshop setting? As opposed to an agenda item? Where it's just a, you know, stormwater management regulation workshop? What, is there any thoughts about that?
I think, I think it depends on our workload.
Okay, so, once we get towards our April, you know, business meeting, I don't know what the date of it is, we'll look at it from that perspective? And if we have applications before us, then maybe we do this in a workshop?
In a separate workshop.
Separate workshop. If it's just this, correct.
Well, that's what we have done. And then, once we have the workshop, you know, if the board feels they're ready, then we can schedule a public hearing.
So, is everyone pretty, is everyone on board with that process? Okay, great, okay. Chairman's report, the only thing that I wanted to just comment on is two positions, two of our members' terms expire in this March at the elections. That would be Eric Bottom and Janice Rosa. If anyone is listening, then Eric and Janice, you would need to reapply for the, for the, to get on the ballot. Anyone who out there who is listening, who wants to run for planning board, it's a three, these are three-year terms. And you are a sitting board member and the, the townspeople are voting on the planning board members. Michael is also, as an alternate, his term will expire. So, at the March meeting, we would either be, if he's continuing to serve or if other alternates want to apply for the alternate position, the planning board would make the decision on filling that term that is expiring. And then if, Diane, if you could look into, we have two alternates whose terms expire 2020? So, why they don't, is someone fulfilling a term? Is someone fulfilling, well, you don't fulfill another alternate's term.
Is filling an unexpired term.
So, if we just double check that? Because I think the, I think all the, I think the alternate terms are supposed to be also staggered.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay. And then obviously do, any alternates, if, you know, you want to be full-time board members and not just wait to be appointed because someone doesn't show up? You know, run for, run in the general election. So, that's the only thing I wanted to comment on that. Any particular committee reports? Gretchen, town council?
Yeah, I'll just mention, because there were pretty big resolutions for the town, directly related to the planning board, but I thought I'd mention them. Two resolutions were passed to put, put on the March ballot the issuance of two bonds. The bigger, larger amount was 12.165 million. And that is for seven water and sewer upgrade and treatment projects that are part of the comprehensive 20-year capital improvement plan in that area. The other one was for $2 million to renovate and modernize the McKelland Dam. And I'll just comment, there was a lot of, a lot of people who attended that session. We actually had it downstairs. It was probably one of the larger groups that had attended a town council meeting. So, that was really, that was good to hear the input from, and the comments from people before that. And I think it was generally in favor of both of those resolutions. So, that was good, everything was aligned. I'd be happy to see that when that happens. I'll just mention that the filing for other offices is also besides the planning board. And that is, that filing starts February 1st. And then the deliberative session for, for the town is on February 2nd at 9:00 AM. And I guess it's here, I don't know where it's at. I don't know where the, where the location is exactly. At meeting town hall.
Is that both school and town combined?
Yes, it's both, yeah. Although they'll be separate, I assume, by, like, last year. And then, of course, the election's on March 12th. So, those are the, the key dates. The first for filing for open offices, deliberative session on February 2nd and then election day on March 12th.
Thank you.
Is that one filing for, to run, starts or ends?
Starts.
Okay.
I believe, yeah.
I could have sworn when I read that it's open now and ends on the first.
I, I will need to check that then.
And that would be on the website.
Yeah, I thought it was.
I, I may have misread it also, but I, I was, I was reading about the resolutions and I, I could have sworn that it said that the filing period is open now and ends on the first.
Yeah, there we go. And as you're doing that.
But you know, I, I could have been wrong too.
Was that all Gretchen?
Uh, yeah, that was all.
Okay, so as you're looking that up. Jamie, any committee reports?
No.
Okay, Sarah?
I guess one small update. So, the Conservation Commission's working to create a photo contest. So, it'll be, we're still working out the details, but it should be something that's happening later this year. So, we'll have people take photos around the community and then pick, I don't know, maybe 10 or 20 photos to showcase. I think it's going to happen at the Stone Church.
Oh, great.
And then maybe do like a calendar of, of the winners or something like that.
That's great, that's a great idea.
We're trying to spread the word, but more details to come.
Great, appreciate that. Jane?
Nothing.
No committees? You are, whoa, you're on stormwater. So, we've got that update. Bill? All stormwater. Okay, planners, comments?
I just wanted to thank the Conservation Commission for their due diligence with respect to the McKelland deal application. I guess they came before you two weeks ago. And their wildlife person who does all the permitting came before you. And I was pleased to hear that the Conservation Commission accepted the application and viewed it favorable. You may honestly support events.
Yeah, yeah, that was great.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other new or old business? Seeing it on, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. No one wants to go home? Thank you, Val.
And I'll second it, that's my job.
And a second?
It's my job, second.
It's my job, second.
Okay, any, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Our next meeting is February?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. Uh, February 12th, Tuesday, February 12th. Great, thank you, everyone, drive safely. Roads are probably getting slick.